Hello and good evening. Welcome to the Wakefield School Committee meeting of Tuesday, November 12th. We will call this meeting to order. We will start this meeting as we do every meeting with our Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I will read our mission statement, which is the vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. At this point, we would ask if there was any public comment, either in studio or on Zoom.
Nothing on.
Thank you so much, seeing none. Now we could see if we have any comment from our youth council.
Hello. So to start with.
Do you want to start with our names?
Yeah. Just for those that might be new.
I'm Shay Duncan, I'm a senior at Wakefield High School.
And Ahmed Ahmed, I'm also a senior at Wakefield High School.
So to start with academics, term one ended last Friday. Report cards will be posted in Power School on Wednesday, November 18.
Also, stay tuned for an email to sign up for fall teacher conferences, which will take place on November 21st from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. and December 6th from 12:00 to 2:00.
Next, moving to athletics and visual arts, performing arts, and extracurricular activities. Our dance team just won the 2024 state championship. They are now back-to-back champions.
And our boys soccer team were in the midst of their own state tournaments in the Elite Eight, but they just won like 10 minutes ago, 1-0, if anyone's interested, and are now going to be moving on to the Final Four.
Our cross-country boys just finished second out of 25 teams in the Division II V race and have qualified to move on to the state meet next week, 11-16 in Denden's.
Winter sports are right around the corner, and we will be hosting a parent and caregiver night on Monday, November 25th from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Galvin Auditorium. Expectations of the winter season will be explained and discussed, and the Wakefield Coalition will be in attendance to present some information as well. We strongly encourage all student athletes to be represented. No athletes need to attend to the event.
The Warrior Marching Band completed an undefeated season, winning the New England Division V Championship on Sunday, November 3rd. They had the highest score of the 29 bands in attendance and won the award for best music, best visual art performance, best general effect, and best color guard and best progression.
Thursday and Friday is the first week for Memorial High School Drama Production at 7:00 p.m. in the Saving Bank Theaters. Tickets are also available at the door.
And some other exciting news, the upper lot has now been open for parking. And that's very exciting for us because now there's a lot of parking and everyone can wake up a little later.
And then school committee and town council are going to be invited to tour the high school tomorrow. And student rep is going to be touring them, and we're excited to do that.
That's, we're good now.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you so much. You guys are going to be freezing, so you can stay or you can take off and get warm, whatever you want to.
We're going to head out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Bye, guys. See you tomorrow.
You bet. Forget sweater weather, like full-blown winter coats.
It's cold. It's cold up at Landry.
Yeah. All right, moving on, we have a consent agenda.
Is that the approval of this?
Yes.
Okay. Move the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of a.
Oh, wait, no, that's budget items. Sorry, we had to move that off. All right, there is no consent agenda. Number eight, budget items, business reports.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight on the packet is the financial report from July 1st, 2024 to October 31st, 2024, for the first four months of the fiscal year. Between expenditures and occurrences, we have about 8.5% remaining for the year. So we're going to be watching carefully our non-salary lines to make sure that our spending continues, but that we're making sure that we are spending down properly. As you can see, the grants on the fourth page are pretty much encumbered. We were just awarded the grants in October, our entitlement grants, Title I, Title II-A, and then the Sbed Grants, which encumber about 32 paraprofessionals on the Special Ed Education Entitlement Grant. And the last page is the revolving account, which we're still hovering just over, not looking at circuit breaker, but just over $2 million. So we are looking at what those programs are going to support for this fiscal year. Most of that is the food service program, so that will be in conversations for this year about what that program's spending plan is for this fiscal year. And that is the financial reports, if anyone has any questions.
You forget from last year, Christine, how does the Doyle one work? Does that get reimbursed from the preschool tuition revolving account?
So Doyle, we pay about six staff members from the revolving account. So what happens is as we're incurring that tuition payments, then we'll move at the end of the year to the local budget. So that always looks like, I know Kevin's asked a couple of times, like why the local budget for Doyle looks over. It's while we're collecting those tuition payments. So that revolving account does support that program. Thank you for that question.
And, go ahead, Christine.
Sorry. The next would be the two payrolls for October, which we have a motion for.
Motion to approve the payroll warrant. Does that work?
Payroll warrants.
16 and 18.
16 and 18.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you very much.
And tonight we have one anonymous gift to approve.
Nice.
We have a motion for that.
Sorry. Motion that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $10,000, $10,000 from an anonymous donor for the art classes at the Galvin Middle School in honor of a former art teacher, Ed. I apologize if I mispronounced his name, Edgar Regosian.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? I'm wondering if somebody could tell us a little bit about the teacher that this is honoring. That's obviously a very generous donation, and I don't have the pleasure of knowing this former teacher, so I didn't know if anyone could share any information. If not, maybe we could at another future school committee meeting learn more about this teacher.
So I can give a, I can give a quick update. And so this former student spoke glowingly about the former teacher that he believes changed his life and was, you know, wondering if he could make a small gesture. And, and so he said we could absolutely, he could do that, we would absolutely welcome that. And I think he surprised everyone by making a gesture that wasn't very small. But I think, again, he said that he thought about it again and really just felt like this teacher made such a difference in his life that he felt like this was the least he could do and didn't want to draw any attention to himself, but really wanted all the recognition to go to the teacher. So that's the update that I got.
That's amazing. I'd love to learn more about this teacher from anyone who could share more about it, about his time at the Galvin. That's pretty incredible.
He'd be happy to share more in our next meeting.
I am not an artist, and I had very little interest in art. I did have him as a teacher, and I think, as did probably Tammy in the audience as well. But I think, like so many people that we were privileged to have here and students continue to have here, they just play such an incredible role, like in your lives. And sometimes they don't even know, like, you know, for this to come so many years later from whoever this anonymous donor is. But, you know, from what I remember, like everybody, quite frankly, I had just a really, really dedicated teacher and educator, talented artist, and pushed those of us that weren't very good at it along and helped with various projects. But yeah, a really great example of, I think, the educators we have here.
That's great. Thank you, Kevin. Okay. Being said, those in favor? That's unanimous. Generous donation, as I said. So thank you, sir. Moving on to superintendent remarks.
So if I could deviate from my agenda a little bit?
Sure.
Will, would you like to come up?
Students will come up.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just be back here.
Great. So we're welcoming Will Carbonaris with a couple of his theater students and to talk a little bit about the work that they're doing in upcoming production.
Hello. Hello, my name is Elizabeth Police.
And I'm Maggie Fornier.
And we are both seniors at Wakefield High, and we are also the co-presidents of the Theater Department at our school.
Yeah.
And all fall long, we have been working very hard on our fall production, which is A Night of Shakespeare. And A Night of Shakespeare, it is. We have like songs, sonnets, soliloquies, like dramatic scenes. And each student who is performing actually chose their own scene, which I think is very special, which is something that we've never done before. So opening night is actually on Thursday, this Thursday, in the Savings Bank Theater. Tickets are $10, and if you are a student at Wakefield Public Schools, it's free. So we hope to have your support, and we hope to see you there this Thursday and Friday, too, at 7:00 p.m.
Later in the season, we'll be doing a production of a play called The Minotaur for our fest show, which is our competition show that travels around the state. So this play is about the story of Ariadne, Theseus, and the Minotaur, told through a modern lens. So it's just a modern retelling of a Greek myth. We're really excited to be working on this. And then our spring show is going to be the musical Hadestown, which is another modern retelling of a Greek myth, the story of Orpheus and Eurydice. And we're really excited to put this on because we're one of the first schools in the country who is actually able to put on Hadestown, the teen version. So we hope to have your support in the future.
That's amazing.
Great.
Any questions from the committee? Mr. Mark?
So first of all, just your ability to pronounce all of those words is tremendously impressive. But you said that we're the first school to be able to perform this?
Yes.
I wonder why that might be. And if you don't know, that's cool, too. That's just kind of an interesting twist.
So I think they just came out with the teen version of Hadestown, and so the rights have been very difficult to get. So we just happen to be fortunate to be one of the schools who are the first to put it on.
Very cool.
So Mr. Carbonaris chose the undone, most difficult cliff to scale.
First in the nation. That's excellent. Well, good luck with everything, and good luck this weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I, could I ask which Shakespeare pieces you all are performing? Presuming you are.
Yeah, I am performing a scene from Much Ado About Nothing as Beatrice.
Nice.
And Maggie here is actually what we call a dramaturge, and I can have you elaborate on that if you'd like.
Yes, so I will not actually be performing in the show. I will be narrating and introducing a couple of scenes, but I did more work behind the scenes. So for the show Much Ado About Nothing, there's a couple of scenes that we're doing. So I read those scenes, and I kind of broke down the difficult Shakespearean language into more modern English so that it's easier to understand, so that the actors have a better sense of what they're trying to portray on stage. And then I like helped them work a little bit, cutting some stuff. Actually, no, I think you cut all your stuff when you're on. I didn't. But stuff with like pronouncing words, the meaning of specific lines. I know there was a really difficult part in the scene where we couldn't figure out a metaphor. Turns out it wasn't a metaphor at all. But that's part of the difficulty with Shakespeare, so my work was to make it easier for the actors.
And it was very helpful.
That's great. It's going to be challenging. Yeah, knowing that that level is tough to digest for so many. So definitely worthwhile work. How many, sorry. I was just going to ask if what anyone was doing, Midsummer Night's Dream.
I don't believe so.
No.
All right. That's only my favorite, but that's all right. Yes, Pete? How many students are participating in the upcoming show? Approximately?
I would say there's roughly like 20 or so in the cast. And then I'd say there's around like 15 more in the crew.
And is it across all grades?
Yes, it is.
Great. Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Nicely done. Nicely done. Thank you so much. So getting back to just comments and updates. First, thanks to Ahmed and Shay, they do such a nice job, and they cover just a list. I just can cross things right off my list that they cover. They do it beautifully. They did report, again, congratulations to the marching band. They did win the states at Nezba on November 3rd. That was Sunday evening, a week ago. The kids did an amazing job, and, you know, it is, it is their second back. So they won last year, they won again this year, which is really amazing and really difficult to do. But I think it's a testament to how hard the kids work and how committed they are. They also get a remarkable direction from Tom Bankard and his team, so I can't say enough about that. And I think if you go and watch the marching band, what is striking is how, how well the students support one another. They just really do a nice job. You know, if someone makes a misstep, they're right there to pick one another up. They're right there to cheer each other on. And I think it's, it's one of the things, one of the many parts of the whole that really make that program so successful. So congratulations to them. In the athletics update, I don't know if we shared that the, the dance team won the state championship this year. And unfortunately, the girls volleyball team was eliminated from the state tournament about a week ago from Weston High School. They were the number one seed and had, they were just stacked. They had a couple of Division One athletes that were just really amazing. And congratulations to Weston, but our girls in Wakefield really did a great job. And again, like the marching band, you know, the students were there and did a great job for one another. So congratulations to them as well. And so that's, that's a, just some quick updates. Just a reminder to the community that a week from tomorrow, at Galvin Middle School at 7:00 p.m., we welcome Dr. Judy Owens, who is an expert, who is expert in the content area of adolescent sleep. And she also has consulted with schools across the state and across the country on helping districts learn about later start times and the science behind the benefits of sleep and later start times for students. So we welcome her, and that's the first of three community forums. So this is a community forum, which will be broadcast by WCAT. There will be a Zoom link as well. So it'll be recorded by WCAT, so it can be accessed there. There'll be a Zoom link there as well. And so, and the topic that evening will be later start times and adolescent sleep. So we welcome her to the community a week from tomorrow. So we're pleased to announce that. At the end of our three community forums, the, the goal is to work with the Student Services Subcommittee to make a recommendation to the larger school committee about what might be one or two options for us to move forward and things for us to consider. But we want to keep people in the loop on that, okay? Happy to answer any questions that anyone might have on those things? No?
When you said one or two options, you mean one or two options in terms of when the school would start?
Well, the recommendation from the Student Services Subcommittee, I would imagine, would be, you know, one way to try to improve what we're doing. You know, one option might be, or a second option might be, and those, that's what we would look at, right? We also need to kind of be thoughtful about how we might roll that out, how we're going to need to include teachers, and how we're going to need to also be moving into the new high school. Right? So there's, there's kind of a lot of layers there, but this is just step one in the course of many, many steps that we're going to need to take before we make that recommendation.
I would, I would just add, knowing that there are so many pieces to it, it would not be surprising if there were sort of one or two kind of options that kind of came out of the forums, one sort of soliciting feedback.
And something to keep in mind when we're negotiating the new bus contract later this year.
Excuse me?
And, and to keep it in mind when we're negotiating the new bus contract later this year.
Yep. And so, you know, any changes to the schedule, it's going to be a change in working conditions, so that's going to need to be bargained. And so we know that, and so when I share that there are layers, we know that that's going to need to be part of it. Appropriate timelines are going to need to be part of it. So, so there's, again, there's a lot of steps, but you're spot on.
Thank you.
Yep. So next up, I'm happy to talk about and report to the committee that if you remember Breezy, our therapy dog that the school committee approved back in 2021, 2022, Breezy is now three, right? And is just an integral part of our, our staff and kind of the work that happens. Breezy comes to school and, and students kind of interact with her, and it's, she's just really remarkable. We are kind of looking ahead and thinking about succession planning and how we might also include another service animal. So the, the plan is, is to welcome Winnie, the warrior dog, who is now a pup and not ready to take on any responsibility. But if we're planning ahead and, and she comes from the same breeder that Breezy came from, that Sammy also came from, and so Sammy is with the Wakefield Police. And so, so Mag Delory and Tom Leahy are kind of pairing up and kind of taking this on. So we will be welcoming Winnie, the warrior dog, with the support of the committee, of course, to, to our school. So happy to answer any questions there. I know she's a pup, and we just got her, so we don't, I don't know when she's going to be through training, but happy to give an update to the committee, or if you have any questions, happy to answer what I can.
She have an Instagram?
She doesn't have an Instagram yet. And now would be the time, right?
She's on day two.
Now would, now would be a beautiful time because she's, she's a pup, right? So she's just, I think, spectacular. And, and I, and I love that, that Mag and Tom are thinking ahead and kind of planning this out. And, because it takes a tremendous commitment. This just doesn't happen by accident. There's a lot of time and a lot of hours outside of school to make, to, to train the, the therapy animal to be able to come into school and contribute the way that Breezy has. So that's where we are there.
I'm wondering on a future agenda if we might be able to have Officer Tobine and, who's our, who's our guidance?
Suzanne Burns.
Suzanne Burns. Would they be willing to come in and kind of talk to us about sort of how integral sort of the, the support animals have been and sort of give us a little bit, especially now that Breezy's three, and I know Sammy's been around for ages. I see them everywhere throughout the district. It might be nice to sort of hear some firsthand stories.
I love the idea. Yeah. Calm school committee right down. Yeah. That'll be great.
All right.
So I would love that. Next up on the, my agenda list is to share kind of the WPS 2024 Vocal Data. So.
I got a good question. Do we need any motion, or is just our nod?
At, at this point, it's informational. So the plan is, you know, it's succession planning. We already have, it's already been approved by committee. We just want to let you know that this is our, this is our plan.
And then during the dog visit, Ms. Hart has one she brings to the Galvin as well. So make it a trifecta and bring that one as well. Which one is that one? I, I forget what the dog's name is, but she has one that's also a support dog she brings to the, to the Galvin.
Great.
Chris, do you know the dog's name? No? Rick, do you know the dog's name? Okay.
I just know Sammy and Breezy.
Yeah, no, I mean, this dog's really cute. I've seen him before.
So, you know, we've been talking for, for some time. I was talking with the, one of our subcommittees just about, you know, sharing some vote, sharing the Vocal Survey data with the larger committee and the community. And so Vocal stands for Views on Climate and Learning. This is a survey that's given annually in, in kind of the same footprint as, as MCAS. So it's given in grades. It's given in grades five, eight, so is it, I'm sorry, is it, I think it's five, six, eight, and 10 is, is how that goes, right? And so, I'm sorry, four, five, eight, and 10. And so grades five and eight take the survey after the science MCAS. And grades four and 10 take the survey, these are all online surveys, and they're taken after the, the MCAS, the math MCAS, okay? And so, and this is a completely voluntary process, but I think it's really valuable information. And please, there, any survey that we give that students participate in, that our schools participate in, this is like a snapshot in time. It's like a moment, right? And so I think it's a nice way for us to shine a light on things that we are doing well, but also areas that need to improve. So the, the Vocal Survey does tests in, really surveys in three areas. It, it surveys engagement, student perceptions of engagement, safety, and environment, right? And then it, it takes all of that survey data and create, creates a composite school climate index score is what it's referred to as. And so what you're seeing here is kind of the areas that are, that are broken down. And so, again, engagement, safety, and environment. So this summarizes each area. For engagement, the, the three technical areas are cultural competencies, relationships, and students' ability to participate. Safety kind of measures the student, student perception of emotional safety, physical safety, as well as bullying and cyberbullying. And environment measures instructional, the instructional environment, the mental health environment, and the discipline environment. Again, this is as measured by students and how they perceive their environment, right? And so, you know, we've talked, and I've, I've spoken at different points in my tenure here about, you know, listening to students, and you can learn a lot from students, from what they say and, and feedback that they give us. So I appreciate, I think that this is one way to take a look at kind of how we're doing and what we're doing and what we're doing well. Again, this is a voluntary survey. And so these are the participation rates in the state. It gives a state average, it gives an average in Wakefield, and then it gives the, the participation rates at all of our schools. And these, again, this is not for all students. It's student in certain grades that are being tested in MCAS. And we give this at the end of the MCAS assessments, so. So scoring and, and index scores. And so they, what happens is that these are broken out into kind of really four areas, right? So there's kind of least favorable, somewhat favorable, favorable, and most favorable. So there are kind of four normed areas. And so, again, to create index scores. Schools are given, they're, they're graded in each area, each one of the areas that I mentioned, but then they're given an overall score as well, so. So this is a snapshot and the aggregate data of each school. So on the left here, you see our elementary schools, and then you see our Galvin Middle School. And at the bottom. and at the bottom is the high school. And so this, the, these data are reflective and follow the trends in the state. So up top, you have state averages, right? So the overall climate index is 50, engagement is 50, safety is 48, and environment is 51. Again, um, favorable is, is really above 50. And so that's kind of the, the norm that we're shooting for. Um, you know, 40, 47 and above is, is, you know, somewhat favorable to favorable, so it's trending in the, in the favorable direction, so that's very positive. And when I say that, that kind of this, this, kind of these bar graphs, if you were to kind of look at them horizontally, they, this kind of follows what's happening in the state as students in middle and high school kind of participate differently in the survey and give feedback differently, right? So, um, this is what we look like here in the Wakefield Public Schools. So, um, I, this is something that I, I spent some time on, and, you know, the survey asks a number of different questions about student safety, about student perception of, do they feel welcome at their school? Do they feel like they belong at their school? Do they feel like they're safe at their school? Do they feel like they have an adult, a significant adult that they can go to at their school? So in this particular slide, I really wanted to highlight, you know, what 10th grade students, we had 170 students, um, and what they were reporting as kind of highlights in this survey. You know, so student engagement. When we look at this, you know, students are open to having friends who come from different backgrounds. 94% of our students say that this is either always true or mostly true. Um, really high number, and compared to the state, it's just, it's not even close. And so that's really an, uh, an amazing testament to kind of how students are, their perception of how they're kind of relating to friends and, and students of different backgrounds. You know, I feel welcome to participate in extracurricular activities offered through our school, such as school clubs or organizations, musical groups, sports teams, or student council. 93%, right? Not a small number, and I think we were talking about this a moment ago about how students support one another. So I, I'm not going to read every one of these, but, you know, um, but these really kind of jump out. You know, 91%, my teachers promote respect among students. I think that's really, uh, a remarkable testament to the work that teachers are doing, um, at, at the high school level. You know, adults working at this school treat all students respectfully, regardless of students' race, culture, family income, religion, sex, or, sex or sexual orientation. 94% um, in terms of engagement and student perceptions around, um, their, what, what the adults think of them and, and kind of they think of the adults and how safe that they feel. So that's really compelling. Um, in the next column, you know, I feel as though I belong in my school community, close to 90%. It's a really high number. Um, if I tell a teacher or other adult that someone is being bullied, the teacher will go and do something to help. 94%. You know, I mean, these numbers are just off the charts in regard to students feeling like they can, they have an adult or a number of adults that they can go to in their school. You know, I have a group of friends I can rely on when I feel down, 94%. Again, this is emotional safety. Um, teachers don't let students pick on other students in class or the hallways, close to 80%. Um, you know, I, these are, again, comparable, can, when you compare these to other schools, high schools or other kind of state, state data, these, these numbers kind of jump off the chart. Um, in terms of environment, that includes kind of teaching environment um, and kind of the norms that are created by, by teachers in classrooms. My teachers support me even when my work is not my best. It's really, I, I think, a nice comment. Um, my teachers set high expectations for my work. My teachers inspire confidence in my ability to be ready for college and career. Again, I, I'm, I just wanted to, I wanted to break this data out because sometimes the index scores don't share what kids are thinking and feeling behind the data. Um, and the, these are kind of normed data points behind the surveys that were completed by students in the Wakefield Public Schools in 10th grade. So I, I just feel like it's important and it's compelling data, and I think a testament to how students are feeling, but also the, the work that the adults are doing at the building. Yes, sir.
What, um, are there any callouts for areas of, of growth or weaknesses that we need to be working on? I mean, clearly, these are awesome positives, but there must have been a significant number of negatives that go, I assume, with...
So we, we've worked together for a little while, have we not? So, we're getting there.
Did I miss the slide?
We're getting there, we're getting, yeah, it's coming.
Oh, good.
It's coming. So, um, I can talk about that at length, Pete, and Melissa had similar questions that she shot over to me before the meeting. And so, yeah. And so I, I just wanted to cover, um, I'm covering a, a few, fewer comments here that were made at fourth, fifth, and eighth. Um, but, you know, fourth grade data is, is, you know, really, you know, kids in fourth grade, um, by and large, really feel like, um, school is a pretty special place. And I would say the same at fifth and eighth, you know? Um, you know, when I get stuck, my teachers want me to try again before they help me, right? And so the norms and routines that are being created, uh, by the adults in the schools are just... And, and, and these are just, I just pulled out a few of the high percentages that I think really speak to how students are feeling. You know, this, this, this perception, fifth graders. Teachers, students, and the principal work together to prevent or stop bullying, 93%. That's, that's pretty good, right? I mean, you know, when we're in the 90s in the space, um, you know, my teachers care about me as a person, 99%. Right? That is just like, as a school principal, former school principal, there'd be nothing that would warm my heart more than to, to kind of read this about how the students in my building felt about their teachers. But I think that this is, again, really a testament to how kids are feeling. You know, in terms of the environment that teachers create, my teachers are proud of me when I work hard in school, 97%, you know? So, um, again, I won't read every one, but I wanted to share these and kind of make this part of the school committee packet, because I feel like these are the data behind the index scores that really demonstrate the positive work that's being done. And so, on the next slide, and so the, the circles indicate the, the index scores for all students, okay? The bar graphs indicate the gaps, right? And so, um, ideally, so what, what I can do and what we do is we look at... So for example, you see Hispanic students. School climate, Hispanic students, this is a subgroup within the larger group. And so, um, there's a, there's a kind of a deviation between, if you go all the way across, there's a delta between where, um, the index is for all students and what Hispanic students are thinking and feeling. And so this is really where the areas of growth are. And, and I have it broken out, and, and administrators have it broken out more specifically for our subgroups. And this is really where our, our work lies, is to dig into who are the students in subgroups that feel differently than the data that was presented on prior slides, right? And so Melissa shot me a, an email with a few questions on it and said, you know, Doug, um, I understand where the, where the good data is. Well done, thank you. Um, but where is our areas of growth? And, and to answer your question, our areas of growth are where gaps exist in terms of what students are reporting. And, and the two subgroups that really are reporting, um, that they're not feeling um, as safe and secure are, um, one is our low-income group, um, our English-language learners, as well as our Hispanic subgroup. So that is a kind of a prompt for us, because we know, um, you know, who are in those subgroups, and we know that that's going to warrant some, some kind of digging to look into how students are feeling in those subgroups, how subgroups, to really qualify, you know, what, what we can do to best support them and make them feel safe and secure and, and part of our community. So, that's a quick update, but this, I think, is the prompt for us to really dig into this data and look at subgroups. And so, again, I, I, I'm summarizing these data in eight slides, um, when I could have created 40 slides, but, yes, sir.
So you're saying that there's a difference in subgroups in terms of average scores of school climate, engagement, and safety?
Correct.
So when, this is areas of growth, so I just want to make sure I know what the numbers mean. So if the number is 56 for Asian versus 55 for Hispanic, does that mean Asian students in Wakefield are, like, feel better about school climate or feel worse about school climate?
Better.
They feel better?
Better.
So it's higher?
Correct.
Um, so Hispanic children feel better about white kids in school climate?
Right.
And they're better in engagement?
Correct, but when you go over to safety?
They're down one.
They're down, um, well, if you look at that, it doesn't, doesn't cover the complete deviation. If you look more at the subgroup and how it's trending, um, it, it captures numbers of students more significantly than, than one or two index points. Because what you're looking at is index points, not percentage points. So the answer is yes.
Uh, there's no way, I, I just don't... What's an index point versus, uh, whatever?
Percentage point.
What's, what's the difference between those two?
So you're not looking at 53%, right? And so if we go back...
Right, that's a...
So these are index scores.
Yeah.
These are index scores that are created
Yeah.
by the Department of Education.
Yeah.
Right? And so these are also index scores, but where there's a gap or where there's kind of, where the, the round dot is, is outside of the bar, kind of that is an area where we should look at. And, and kind of when we dig more into the questions, you can see more about what kids say and report differently um, around specific areas of safety and engagement.
Okay.
Okay?
So when you were talking about the, in the previous slides, when you say 94%, you were talking about percent, not index.
Correct.
Index numbers, so they're not comparable to what we're looking at in that slide.
So this is 94% of the students in the aggregate report this.
Correct.
But when you look at the subgroup, you know, it's not 94%. It's like 70% or 60%. So tho, that type of gap, right? Which, you know, the only way, Kevin, that I knew to kind of summarize the gap was in this slide. Because that's also the prompt that the Department of Ed uses as well. I, I might have, I might have done it differently if I had more slides, because I was trying to summarize this and be thoughtful and not turn it into a two-hour...
So one of the things out of band, doesn't have to be today, that'd be helpful, is just like you created the slides of significant areas of strength. I love to see the same questions where the percentages were low, because to me, those would be the areas where we say we have to work on those and just, you know, we can do it as a out-of-band follow-up.
Sure, no, more than happy to do it. More than happy to do it, because when you look at, when you look at engaged, excuse me, when you look at engagement and you see this in the aggregate, and you go down, so it has all the students in the aggregate, but then you go down to subgroups, that's where you see the trend data and you see the gap. So I can absolutely provide that. Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's, going, just to back up what, what Pete just said, because like, when you look at Wakefield's index scores, it's like 48, 47, 49. And I get that the percentages are different than the index scores, but I assume that if everyone, if 94% of students are saying it, it's like really good, I assume the index score should be higher than 48.
But that's one question out of X.
Right, no, so that's why I agree with Pete. We need to see the questions where 18% of Wakefield kids feel something positive. Like, just so we get a sense of where the areas of growth that we need to work on are. Like, 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 we just don't know where our students are struggling.
Historically, in the past, like, let's say a couple of years, I think school committee has asked from, um, from district leadership um, for them to be, for there to be some brevity in those slides. Um, because, um, they, at one point, um, we were here till 11 o'clock. Um, this may be an area, things like this, where maybe it would be more beneficial to have a few more slides to indicate more data.
Or just send us the raw data?
One thing, I'd, one, one thing that I'd be interested in, because it's, it's, it's spoken about earlier in those slides, is that this data has changed significantly, sort of from 2020 to 2024, even from last year. I'd like to see it, sort of the way that we look at MCAS data historically, and see where we're trending as a district in terms of how, how we're doing in these spaces. Um, I do appreciate the area of growth, so we can see how those different pockets of students are sort of faring as, as compared to the whole district. I, I definitely see that. Um, but I do tend to like, sort of, personally, I like, I like historical data.
Mm-hmm.
Just to be able to notice trend lines.
Yeah, I mean, we can share kind of trend information, um, trend information in both directions. So we can share what's trending positive and what's trending less than positive.
Yeah.
Um, absolutely.
I, I know I already talked to you about this, but I, I also think it's really important for us to look at other districts' data and see where they're doing well, where we're not doing well, and maybe get some policy ideas and things that we could implement in our district to kind of improve those areas for growth, but we need to identify what those are first.
I think that's a conversation. I, I think, yeah, I, I, again, this is a prompt, this is a moment in time, and these are 10th graders, right? So I, I think that this is helpful for us to think about how our students in the aggregate are doing, but also how subgroups are doing, and what we might do to, to best meet their needs. So I, I like that idea, I don't, I, so it's a conversation, yeah. So I, because I think that there might be a number of different things that we might be able to do to, to best support. Yes, sir.
Um, you talked about how, like, when you, when you take a fourth grader or a fifth grader's response to these questions, uh, that, you know, for various reasons, you're probably going to get different, based on maturity and based on like...
Yeah, absolutely.
Not to, like, say, fourth and fifth graders' data is, is, is as valid as high school's. But looking at the numbers, like, when you're comparing, like, the Greenwood and the Woodville, you know, to like the middle school and high school, I, I, I would like to look at other districts and, and see if that holds, sir, with everyone else, where, like, if fourth and fifth graders are just like, yeah, school's awesome, where the high schoolers are like, like, middle schoolers, like, you know, are like, oh, like, oh, man. I, I'd like to see it, if, if that's like, kind of comparable. Um, you know, because, because just looking at, at this, it's like, like, if a parent just looks at these slides, it's like, oh my gosh, our elementary schools, everyone's happy. At the high school, middle school, people aren't happy. So I think it would be helpful to look at, well, sorry, relatively less happy than the elementary school.
Yeah.
So I'm just, so I'm just curious to see if you look at other districts, if that data, like, kind of skews in that same direction.
So, you know, I, again, I, I hope that, you know, I feel like we're, we're jumping on the, um, the delta, right? Or, or the differences, right? And so I think that this warrants a little bit more digging and, and maybe a little bit more data. More than happy to provide that, more than happy to provide it in a few different ways. And so I, I'm, I'm good for another 10 slides. And so, um, not a problem. More than happy to do it, and maybe I can share that ahead of time and we can have a, a little bit more, a little bit deeper conversation about, about the subgroups, what our goals are, how our goals might align, what the work we're doing, the work we're doing with curriculum, the work we're doing across the district, and how we're kind of looking at, at these data as just, again, as a, as a prompt, and think about how our work intersects with this and the differences we can be making. But, you know, I, I, one of the takeaways that I hope the group can take away is, is, um, again, it, there's areas of growth for us, but when, when people ask questions about how are your schools doing, and, and there are kind of data that's being presented in the aggregate, um, I think we're doing, I think teachers are doing well. And I think that the environments that are, that are being created in classrooms and in schools is very strong. And so I don't, I don't want that to be missed in kind of the need for more information, the questions around more information. Is that fair? Again, happy to answer any, anything that that raises for you. Yes?
I just, I just had one really quick last question.
Yeah.
Um, sample size, so the, the sample, when it, it said that 98% of Greenwood kids took the vocal data, that's 98% of kids who are taking the MCAS?
At grade four. Correct. Right, and so...
So is there a, a subset of kids that aren't taking the MCAS in grade four?
Uh, no, grade four kids all take the MCAS.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, unless they're medically excused or are warrant in school that day, or, yeah. So, yeah, yeah. So, but these, these participation rates are only students that are participating in the survey. the survey, not in MCAS. Right. So this is a choice, right? So.
I just wanted to go back, like, not to take anything away from sort of the ways in which we're succeeding, which it is great to hear, I love seeing that messaging.
Yep.
I love knowing the kids feel supported, that they feel safe in school, that they feel like their, you know, their needs are being met, like what school committee in general is asking for is in that growth area. It's great to hear the good news.
Yeah.
But you like the criticism, because that's where you can grow.
Yeah.
And I think that's what school committee is asking for, is sort of can we focus on the, the good news is great news, where can, what can we do to help to grow, I think is what I'm hearing. Eileen?
You know, on the last half, I think, kind of, so I'm more worried about the 21% in 10th grade who said that they don't feel safe in the hallways and that, like, yeah, 79% said they do, but 21 said they don't.
Where did you get that from?
Right there, teachers don't let students pick on other students in the hallway.
Oh, 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 the delta from the 100, okay, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
So that's, like, you know, like, that's, you know, and then like 13% in eighth grade.
So what, I think, right, but the question.
That, I'm just saying, it's overwhelmingly, yes, majority feel okay, but I worry about the group of kids that aren't feeling safe.
Do we know it.
So that's, that's all.
Do we know it?
It's a small, it's a small percentage, but, you know, we got to stick.
No, and I think, and I think that that's where our subgroups and the areas of growth for this particular slide is to really highlight all of our subgroups and kind of where those 21 students reside.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So for each of these questions, are they broken out in the raw data by the subgroup? So for that one?
Yes.
You could actually see which?
Yes, sir.
As it broke out to this slide, how?
We can.
Okay. Yeah, I'd love to, I'd love to see that additional data.
We absolutely can, we absolutely can. And when I say it's a prompt or a moment in time, so, you know, as the sample size changes, right, because again, it's one grade, so I'll give you an example. So when the sample size changes, if you're looking at Walton, grade four, right, it's two classrooms, and if you're looking at a subgroup, that, that sample size might just be a few students, right? And so, again, it's not that it doesn't warrant a look, but, you know, the, the data, it starts to unreal, unshow itself and kind of be a prompt for what next and what we're looking at, right? So 10 slides in the queue, not a, not a problem. I think it's good.
I love data.
Yeah, happy to do it, more than happy to do it.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Sure, 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 sure. Thank you for your questions. I already talked about our community forum and a late start update, and that does it for my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, moving on to item 10, Chair's comments. Don't, I always say I don't have a lot, but, so appreciate today, the community calls came back, as, and now moving from every other week, like, we've done the community Zoom calls that, that the administration hosts, that community members are welcome to join and talk about whatever is sort of a hot topic at the moment. And so now we've moved to a quarterly model from every other week, and it was well attended today. One thing that sort of came up in that meeting was there was a little bit of talk of bullying, and just, just in terms of like what the district does and, and how are people feeling supported, and seeing some of the numbers that kind of came through in the vocal survey and, you know, not being 100%, but one thing that, that strikes me in just seeing the vocal data again, and going back to sort of youth risk behavior surveys, is how much trusted adults factor in with, and not even just trusted adults, trusted adults, trusted peers, sort of peer groups, and so when questions come up on the community call about sort of what are we doing as a district, I just, that we can never do enough, but we're doing a lot of work in making sure that kids have connections in school, that they feel safe when they come to school, and when we're finding that that sort of falls a little bit short, then mechanisms are, are trying quickly to be put in place to make sure that they, that they feel good when they come here. So I was surprised to sort of hear that we didn't have a comprehensive, like, bully, bully policy umbrella, I felt like we did, but I.
I think we have a comprehensive policy.
We do, we do. I think it might be worth looking into sort of where, where there might be areas of growth in that as a district on the school level and how we can align in very similar ways to how we align in curriculum. Where else can we sort of make sure that student experiences are equal in that space and that they feel supported? If we, if we let them know young, that, that everyone is there for them, it hopefully will just carry through for their entire time that they're here. So that, that was one thing I was thinking just, just today, after, after that call, but it was great to see everybody, great to see the participation and, and good questions. One thing I wanted to mention was that there was a veteran assembly at the Galvin yesterday that we do every year, and it was great. The, the high school chorus that sang was amazing, the orchestra did phenomenally well. I'm just blown away by the caliber of, of sort of student musicians that we have. The special guest was, was Commander Shelby Nikton, and she's the commander of the USS Thomas Hudson, and it's a, it's like a, it's a tactical, it's a missile destroyer is what it is, and there was some video of sort of an incident that they had in the Red Sea in January of last year, where she commanded and her, her group got a Bronze Star for their response to, to an incident. And it was incredibly impressive. She was an incredibly impressive speaker, and to know that she was a Wakefield graduate, she, she went to elementary school at Franklin School, graduated from this high school, was all through the, the sort of the extracurricular activities, soccer, student government, just everywhere. And when we talk about sort of students and our vision of a, of a Wakefield graduate, I don't think you could get any better than that, and sort of having that person be a student or being a, an adult model of somebody who had come through our district is just incredibly empowering. So it was, it was a wonderful presentation, she was amazing, the students were amazing, so I was really glad to, to sort of be in attendance there. And thank you to, to sort of WCAT, and thank you to Tim, and thank you to Tom Baggett, like, all the pieces from the district that have to, have to come together to make something like that happen. It was absolutely top notch, so thank you for that. I'll leave it at that and move on to Subcommittee reports. So Mr. Markham, Finance and Facilities?
Well, thank you. Finance Facility Subcommittee met last Wednesday and had a pretty, a pretty busy agenda, a couple of things that we, that we, we walked through. We did a debrief on the tri board meeting from the prior week, we had a conversation and first, a presentation from Christine and Doug on FY25, you know, year-to-date, some of the, and the, and the highlights, which were shown and discussed this evening. We've got kind of a preview of what was presented to in tonight's packet. Spent a good amount of time next, talking about some initial planning around FY26, some of the areas of concern, some of the areas of, of needed growth. Had a, another, another of ongoing conversations around the use of revolving funds, as will be sort of something that is a recurring theme for us, as, as it needs to be, talking about what some of the fund purposes were, what some of their uses are, and our, and our growing expectation of the capacity of the school, of the food service account to be able to support the, the, you know, the growing needs that, one, that is expected of us, or at least has been asked of us, that we have, we have agreed to with regard to some personnel expenses, and what does that, what does that look like, you know, in, in the future? And we need to be, we need to create, continue to create a balance between being able to rely on revolving funds into the long term and being able to, to make, you know, budgets in matter from one year, one year, uh, to the next. So that will be an ongoing conversation that we'll continue to strategize on, but it was certainly a good, a good start as we're, as we begin to, to explore FY26. We got a, a facilities update on the ongoing projects and where things stood since the opening of school through, through last week, and just a little more of a, of a deeper dive into where things are with the, with the, with the high school and the construction project, and a little bit about what our tour may look like, because that's coming together for next Monday, right? And then Tim had presented some initial thoughts or initial look at some FY26, some of the capital planning work, or capital, capital projects, rather, capital project work. So it was a, it was a very, it was a very good meeting, it was, so, and thank you to Christine and Doug and Tim for, for being so prepared, you know, for it. We have our next meeting scheduled for the first Wednesday in December, and we're, we're going to keep, you know, keep, you know, pace.
Great, thank you. Lever and Personnel, Dr. Scavell?
Great, thank you. So like the Finance and Facilities Subcommittee, we also met on Wednesday, which Christine pointed out, she got to start and end her day with Mr. Markham, which is always a great day.
It's a pleasure, that's really, that's a bonus.
We mentioned that a number of times. We had two main agenda items, as I had described in our last meeting. First was to talk a little bit about our negotiations, our upcoming negotiations with our Unit C, so our paraprofessionals, and so looking forward to that, so we were able to discuss like those things and start to prepare a little bit. Tomorrow, as an aside, there's a JLMC with Unit C, and I know partly, partially what, I think we're going to just present some of the dates kind of moving forward, they had suggested on the timeline, and so I think we have a great calendar potentially set up, really looking forward to that, and, you know, feel really good about kind of where we stand with those negotiations that are upcoming. As also aside, I know the cafeteria food service workers have reached out as well, interested in starting negotiations as well, so looking forward to those. The second part was to discuss in the Subcommittee our corp position, so we took staff kind of looking at the most recent kind of iterations of both the description and the contract, kind of married the two, updated the language that Mr. Markham had done with Judy's last contract. That's hopefully complete, it's going to most likely be posted as soon as tomorrow, so certainly encourage if anyone's looking for a good gig with a great group of people, not only get to earn some money, but to work with all of us, which could be good or bad for them, that position will be posted relatively shortly. So a little less than a month, you know, give some people time to submit their materials, the Subcommittee will probably do kind of a first pass and present the full committee with a couple of filings or something along those lines for everyone to participate in. So looking forward to, to move forward with that process as well. So we don't have any set meeting time scheduled for our next one, but anticipate that we'll be gathering again to start our, commence our negotiations with Unit C.
Great, thank you. Student Services, Ms. Collins?
We have not met since the last meeting, and I'm sure, Doug, I, I missed the, the beginning of what you had mentioned, I'm sure, because it was on the agenda here that you spoke about the community forum.
I did.
But I'll just say another plug for the community forum, which is for the Late Start with Dr. Judy Owens, is next Wednesday, November 20th, at 7:00 PM.
Policy and Communications, Ms. Davis?
We have not met, we are planning to meet on Monday, November 18th, at 5:00 PM. It's going to be a short meeting, just due to timing for members. Main topic on that meeting will be to review a code of conduct policy for WPS employees, and we may get into continuing discussions on a revised field trip, overnight field trip policy. We won't get into any larger topics, just because 30 minutes doesn't give us a ton of, a ton of time.
Liaison reports, if any. Anyone have a liaison report?
Well, I'll, I'll just take a moment to, to plug the, the Snow Angels program that the, the Youth Action Council organizes, so if any, any students 14 or older are interested in helping the elderly with their snow removal, snow removal this, this winter, please reach out.
Great, thank you. Yeah, who does, ESC does, they just collected all the pumpkins?
Yeah.
Right, and that went off pretty well?
They did, yes, it went off, went off very well.
Did we get a winner from the schools, like, who collected the most pumpkins?
I have no idea.
No, no.
Well, our meeting's not until this Thursday, so.
Okay.
I, I'll ask. But, yeah, no, it went off well.
Anyway, the environment, right? That's good.
Was it smashing?
I saw, I don't know, we should talk to them about next year, because I saw one community did trebuchets, and that could be a thing, so.
Smashing, there's a lot of people to go with that.
Yeah. Future dates and agenda items, our next school committee meeting will be Tuesday, November 26th. We have some future agenda items, MTSS curriculum update, capital, high school update, and CPAC update. As Mr. Markham mentioned, there is a high school tour for us tomorrow and, and a construction tour on Monday. I'll bring my own white hat. Item number 13, any school committee comments?
To no surprise to anyone in the room here, Saturday is town meeting. The first two items are of high importance to WPS. The first one is to give approval to put solar panels on the Galvin, which would pay off in about three and a half to four years, so it's kind of a no-brainer to make that investment. And then the second has to do with the MBTA Communities Act. The Town Council has worked to come up with another proposal, and it impacts us, because if the town does not move forward with that proposal, then it does impact significant amounts of grants that come into the school district, and that's money that would have to be made up from the local budget in some way, or we're going to end up losing services. And that's not an insignificant amount of projects that we enable to fund, whether it's new curriculum or whether it's an early start to kindergarten for some incoming kindergartners. So it's just something to keep in mind, there's always opportunities to, you know, if the law changes in the future, to go change our mind, but this is the last opportunity we have as a town to comply with the law, and I know the Town Council has worked hard to come up with an alternate proposal to try to be as, as, as least disruptive as, as possible, given the requirement that has been set in front of us. I'll also echo what Stephen had said earlier with regards to the Veterans Day commemoration that happened at the Galvin, both the choral students from Anna Morrell, as well as the wind ensemble students, Mr. Bankard, just amazing, the performances they put on, the speakers were really inspiring to, to hear from as well, so give my thanks to all the hard work. I know the Veterans Advisory Board, et cetera, had put a lot of work into that, that day ceremony.
Yeah, they always do, yeah, that's a great group. One thing about the town meeting, in case people don't know, is that childcare will be provided, so no, no excuse there. Any other comments?
Just really quickly, just wanted to kind of comment on the trivia event last Friday for the Galvin. The minute our chair refused to be on our school committee team, I had it out for him and was very proud to say, I think we did, we were successful in beating you as well, so that was good.
We had shirts.
You did have shirts. Yeah, they were, they were.
We had shirts too, let's.
That's fair.
But it was a really great time, and Pete, I know you, I mean, either of you are good at sports, that was our biggest weakness, so that did us.
No, I would not have helped with that.
I am neither good at sports nor trivia.
I was at a hockey tournament last weekend, but that wouldn't have helped you guys.
But we did well, joined by a couple former colleagues too, Lisa Butler and Ian Denny, so it was a great time, and thanks to everyone who put that together, and it was a lot of fun, so we may take you back, Stephen, if you're, if you're willing next year, but.
I just tried to spread, you know, spread the love around, more tables, yep.
But it was a great time.
It was a great.
It was nice to spend time with all of you too.
It was a great time. To, to sort of piggyback on that, what I was, I was going to say was, I was just impressed, and, and so Mr. Gorski puts it on, he's in studio, thank you so much for all of that hard work that, that goes into it. I don't think I saw you stop moving all night, that was impressive, but the number of, of district educators that were there was amazing. It was, I wasn't expecting that, I mean, they did take home the gold, that table, but the, but, you know, some friends were, were in a close second. were in a close second place, so I don't think it was a, I don't think they were ringers. But anyway, they were just smart. But the amount of people that sort of give their own time and their own money back to the students in this way, to sort of find a way to sort of have fun together and, and support students is just, was just inspiring. So it was, it was a great night. I had a ton of fun. My table was pretty, was pretty good. I miss seeing you guys at the back of the room, but it, it was, it was just awesome. It was, it was so cool. So we will be, be there again next year, hopefully with some easier questions, content. Yeah, the eighties songs also was a dead quiet round for our table, so.
We cleaned up.
Oh, we cleaned up.
We cleaned up. It's all of these. It's rid of our alley.
The Genius Stroke was the team that decided they wanted to come into last place, and so just handed in a blank last round sheet. I mean, that's just, that's golden, so, good for them. I don't know if they want anything on their scratch to get, I'm sure that would all have come back to the district, if it was millions, anyway. So, yes, that, thank you for a fun, a fun night, and thank you for everyone that showed up and were able to sort of raise, raise some funds for a great cause, the, the Galvin Science Olympians. So that was, that was awesome. Anyone else? No? Okay. That being said, I believe we have a motion for adjournment.
Yes. Sorry. I'm always sure.
Moving at the school committee adjournance meeting of Tuesday, November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second. Motion is debated, seconded. Those in favor?
Karen and Joe, to post first thing in the morning. I just see-
You name it. Thank you so much. Everyone have a wonderful evening.[1737.26]